I like your shirt.
Thank you.
I thought it was something I had pulled out, but it's.
My feet have no idea. So, thank you.
So it is, it is recording right now.
Are you, uh? Did I say that?
Do you got it? No, I don't know. I know what it's saying.
Listen. Okay, thank you. Ready to go? Ready, set, go. Good afternoon, I'm Janet Wall, the acting service. I would like to welcome everybody to my library board and trustee. I've called this order as well. Four seven. At our last meeting, some public comments included personal attacks. While we appreciate the passion of our patrons, these attacks hinder productive conversation. Following a telephone conversation with Jenny Scott at the Montana State Library, she reiterated that the First Amendment protects free speech, but it doesn't give commenters the right to harass the trustees or speak with a disrespectful diet. We do thank you for coming. Before we proceed, I would like to, those who wish to comment that they need to sign in and get the copy of our policy, which is at the table. The library values everyone's right to be heard. We encourage comments focused on library issues. A reminder that all public comments are three minutes. Are there any changes to the agenda? I think it looks good. Okay, CNN will now vote on a motion to accept the, to accept the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion can be changed by two thirds of the vote. If you look at Robert's rules on page ninety-three and ninety-five. We will now have elections for the chair. Our bylaws do not require an election by ballot. So our election will be by voice vote. Our trustee manual has also suggested that we rotate leadership positions. We will now begin our nominations. Are there any nominations for chairman?
I know I'm not Nancy. I don't. I nominate Kim.
Okay. And I nominate Nona. Is there any more nominations? Then they are closed.
Okay, over just one second so I can make sure I did type that's what they had us.
Okay.
And everyone's allowed to vote, right? Last time we had some disagreement on if you could vote for yourself.
Unless, if you have a committee of less than twelve people, everyone votes.
And then Janet, you nominated Nona. Okay, so we're sure of that. The right person. Okay.
Okay, our nominations are closed, so we will now begin the voice vote. If you wish to be sure, someone on the list has a chance of being elected, you should vote against those you wish not to be voted against. That's in Robert's rules, page three eighteen. Kim has been nominated for chairman. All those in favor of electing Kim to the office of chairman, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
So our second one now, we'll go on to the next one. Nona has been nominated for chairman. All those in favor of electing Nona to the office of chairman, say aye. Opposed, no.
Aye.
I'm neutral.
Pardon me?
So I'm neutral.
Okay. Voting must continue until we receive the majority. So we have received a majority. I know now is now.
Congratulations.
Yeah, sure.
We will have a run now on the vice chair. So I have served vice chair. I thought it was an excellent position because I've spent a lot of time looking at the information. So, um, um, I think this, I would like to nominate Jesslyn because I think it's a good learning position to be in. Is there any other nominations?
I'd nominate Kim.
Okay, so we will only go back to, our nominations are closed, we will now begin the voice vote. So, Jesslyn has been nominated for vice chair. All those in favor of electing Jesslyn to the office of vice chair, say aye. Opposed, no.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Jesslyn has now the vice chair. And, yeah, this guy. So the minutes have been sent to all of our members. Are there any changes to the June twenty-second meeting minutes?
Um, Janet, since you have so much experience, do you want to take a go with the roles of chair and vice chair? She'll probably move on.
Oh, well, actually, this is the point where the chair takes over.
Okay.
Really, are you ready? You can, or you feel like? Okay.
Is that okay?
But it's fine, we'll be there. Just. And we might go on.
So we, are there something you can read somewhere? There are, there's a lot of rules about being chair.
I got the idea the chair runs a meeting unless the chair's not there and then the vice chair runs the meeting. Then there's a chain of command with the chair and vice chair, but Janet knows more.
Yeah, and in our handbooks, there's a bunch on it. Yeah, there's a bunch of bylaws, yeah. And then also it suggests that, that the, the positions need to be changed. No, I'm sure the same decision.
So it's one year term?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, I passed that.
Because you completed Danny's term and then.
I completed, no, I mean, I completed the vice chair too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you just held vice chair instead of that now.
Okay, so. So we'll go back. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
One second.
The two minutes.
Yes, the two minutes.
Yeah, let's do the two minutes thing.
Yeah, so is there any comments from the public or any discussions on the minutes of the June meeting? So we will now vote on the motion to approve the June minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any objections, say no. Motion carried. We'll now make a motion to accept the monthly financial report. Is there a sound? Or is there a motion with something made promotion?
I confess, I didn't review these closely before. Because I just, I had to ask for them. You had to ask for them. No, 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 I had to ask for the numbers. Usually they come around the second week of the month, but since she was closing the fiscal year, it just takes longer, so I went to ask for them. Yeah, and I, I sent them out as soon as I got them. Um, and Cheryl, Scott wanted to make sure that everybody, this isn't necessarily the very, very final recap of the year, she hasn't. Okay. Yeah.
And we have them this year. Yeah, we have what you have.
Yes, and then I did do the bills paid yesterday afternoon, so that is in the. Like the break, they're the pullout.
The repair maintenance at a hundred and seventy-two percent is kind of scary.
Right, a lot of that is from the lights. That is a discussion we need to have as part of capital improvement with the trustees and the foundation.
How about office supplies and materials for the day? What's another thirty-one percent?
Uh, are we okay with that? Yeah. That's, so there's office supplies and materials and then there's operating expenses and I am not. It seems, well, it's, for a library, it's kind of a gray area because like paper, well, at maybe the other county offices are considered an office supply for the library. It's an operating expense and so that kind of like, we'll code something a certain way and then Cheryl will move it around. So sometimes that's where those differences come to.
Are we over, okay with the overages? Because I mean.
So if you look at the, in bold, Fort Benton ended up at ninety-two percent. Big Sandy is ninety-five. And Geraldine was at a hundred and eight, and so part of that is we extended those hours by four because she was just doing more over there outside hours, so that should be covered there. And so we.
Did we agree on that? I thought we weren't.
We do.
No, that was a new budget, the preliminary budget. Um, and then the state aid was at eighty-four, the Pathfinder at eighty-six, and then the technical services at ninety-two. So overall, because we have to operate under that final line, we were at ninety-two percent. So.
Do we get to keep the underspend funds?
Theoretically, it goes into the depreciation fund. Okay, so that would actually be a good training we have.
What, Janet?
Um, for Corey Sloan, we have our new, state consultant that Tracy Cook moved to a different federation, so we have Corey Sloan. She is online today. Um, but that would be a good trustee training would be depreciation fund. That is an issue, like, I don't want to say an issue, but an education point for library boards all over the whole state, so.
Yeah, it's to dig into the funding.
Well, to understand what goes into depreciation and what those things. So overall, we were at ninety-two percent of the requested budget.
So most of the time it has to be over five and a lot of times it's.
Over five percent or five thousand?
Okay, in order to use it out of the depreciation schedule. But we'll have something done for four hundred, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and then when it gets kicked out. So the depreciation schedule should keep it decent every year. We have quite a big depreciation schedule.
Okay.
So.
And that's for, what they say, permanent fixtures like carpet depreciates, or carpet does not depreciate, but say a structural and sidewalks would, that kind of a.
Yeah, we kind of have a format and it's really weird. That would be a good study. Because if we did something like infotation with all the libraries, that should, that should be in the depreciation schedule, but I think it's over ninety or ninety thousand or something right now in the.
Um, it's not as high because we did that elevator repair.
Oh, okay.
So it did come down a little bit.
Okay, I don't have that number.
Yeah, but it's up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can only carry so much.
You can only carry so much, yeah.
Okay.
Emily, where, where would we find that online training? Is that on that website you sent me?
It should be, and then because there's also, like, all trustees are required to get, I believe, three hours per certification. And so we've talked about doing, they've got shorter videos, like, we could play a video at each meeting.
Would that be like the ones that enter the free one that we do?
Does that count as? Yeah. Okay, they're all about. Thank you.
So what we're looking at, everything's at a hundred percent as of July, but so we're looking at the over, overage, unhinged, the product.
Well, not everything is at a hundred percent.
No, but I mean.
It's finished.
It's finished.
It's what it is.
We're talking about, you know, starting new, new year, new life source. Is depreciation on her?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it might not be in this long because she didn't print everything that she normally prints for me because she wasn't quite done yet. Obviously, that ended up being on.
Was it with its own thing somewhere?
I think it might be. A slide for capital. Yes, so sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. It's a great. So it's like page one of one is the third from the end.
Yeah. The national point spent, close to seventy-five.
Actually, so the very last page in the packet, sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six. Okay. So we. Oh, there. Okay, so because it's building, that's depreciation. Okay. Anyway, Cheryl might be able to explain that better if you want to stop and see her.
Yeah, and it's been working on education, but. You know, we had to have all these, I know rattles and everything, get the carpet on this side, so it's, it's confusing how it's.
Is that just library or is that the whole county?
Libraries.
And all in four branches, three branches? It's not earmarked for any specific. It's just the general.
General. And that's another question. How much can, because I know they take it away if it's not used, so.
Uh, I think only when it gets to a certain level is my understanding, but we're not to that level yet, no.
Will the final get sent to us as well?
I am, yeah, yeah.
And we can approve it even though it's not there?
Um, you can approve what I presented or you can say the financials I presented.
Okay, thank you.
I really want to know how much facts we got from the local homes.
It's on.
I know.
Was that a craft, Alka-Seltzer?
Mm-hmm, shows for bottle rockets.
Oh, yeah. That's what they were doing last week, or last month when we came.
Yeah.
Which they're both. I actually ordered Alka-Seltzer. They work really good for cleaning your water, if you're, you know, when you have the basis and you have plants in there. I just ordered some yesterday.
I approved the financials as they've been presented.
It is, okay, is there any public comment on the financials? If not, we will make a motion to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion has settled. We're now we're on branch reports. And then. You are up.
Okay, um, so Big Sandy's not on Zoom. Um, their themes for June is under summer reading, that's our main project for everyone going on right now. Um, so adventures in the library. They had Alice in Wonderland, Narnia, and The Hobbit for their themes. In Fort Benton, projects were summer reading. We had Dennis Swibel with Humanities Montana that was well-intended. And then our annual summer celebration book sale, which we raised over eight hundred dollars. So four hundred of that goes to the grant that we had to unlock the eight hundred more dollars. So we have the order ready for twelve hundred dollars in new children's books ready to go. Our themes were adventure, Juneteenth, dads and grandpas, cats, snails, patron pics, and LGBTQ plus authors, illustrators, and historical figures. Um, and then Sammy Joe is on, let me, yeah, so just one second. Okay, Sammy Joe?
So for June, the Geraldine Branch Library's themes were travel, adventure, and new books because we've had quite a few that I like to put out in display. And then for projects, I had, I had quite a bit going on. So for the month of June, I completed our Democracy Project soft launch officially through Humanities Montana. And I had two teams commit to doing that this fall through the school year. So hopefully this fall, we will start doing our full Democracy Project instead of just being part of their soft launch. Um, I was also able to fix the bottom of our shed. That was a concern for the Geraldine Town Council. The town was concerned that the bottoms were open on the shed and that animals could potentially get in there and make little homes. So I bought some pressure-treated boards and painted them to match the exterior of the shed and put them up and closed off the access points, so it's just now all solid and nothing can get in there. Um, I did reach out to Shaya Clark when she was in here one day. She's on our town council and asked her about our overgrown tree in front of the library. It was starting to rub on the new tin and it was kind of a concern for me. And she, she agreed that it needed to be trimmed back, so it actually got trimmed back this Friday and it looks wonderful now, so that's all done. And then we had a little bit going on for fun days. Over fun days, I asked Kalen Winneberg if she would be willing to come to the Geraldine Library and talk about how she came about publishing her first book and kind of the highs and lows of that. Kalen's a graduate of the Geraldine High School here. She graduated in two thousand and fifteen. And she did agree to come and she came on Friday, June fourteenth, while I was open for people to come in and talk to her about just everything she had to go through to publish her book. And then Kalen was kind enough to donate two signed copies of her book to the Shoto County Library. Um, I was originally open that June fourteenth from one to five for our oral history project. And I did have quite a few people come in to ask questions and view the slideshow that we ended up putting together with what I have gathered so far. It ends up being about a fifteen-minute slideshow. There's quite a few pictures and a little bits of information there. And people really seemed to enjoy that. I did end up putting the slideshow up in our big front window throughout the rest of the weekend. So if people weren't able to make it on that Friday, they were able to view the slideshow as they were kind of walking around downtown. Um, I had a total of eight people come in specifically for the slideshow to ask questions and to drop things off and stuff. But I did end up having more people come in that day than that for Kalen and then just to see the library and things. I did reach out to Bethany and asked her about how to kind of go forward about gathering more oral history than just pictures for this project. And I think her and I have come up with a great idea and I'm hoping to get that rolling after summer reading programs finished. But that's, that's all that I did in June, I think.
That's the load. That was excellent photos she put on Facebook, one with the tree. And you can post, you can post the photo, I update it should if you want.
I did, I believe. Um, yeah, it should be on there, but.
I think. Good, I remember the elevation.
So thank you for being a woman of many talents.
Oh, I don't have the shed updated on there, so I will definitely post that later today.
Thank you.
Um, on the page that I printed for you, it says, please see attached. And that was just if she was unable to zoom in today because of summer reading. But since she was able to zoom in, there's not anything attached. So, thank you, Sammy Joe.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's our branch reports.
Um, we have no change right now.
Okay.
I am in contact with, I have been talking to Brianna Bowman just a little bit, but just, there were some looks that I was wondering if she could pull for me, so, yeah.
So I have a goodbye. I went up to Peps and I did want to thank them for ordering the food for the lunches and providing the space that were prepared. And also to the volunteers that came to help. There's over sixty lunches that go out to the Big Sandy Library. And also to thank the volunteers that help with the libraries when they run their summer reading events.
I'd like to note that I think Sammy Joe's putting that video in the window so that everybody can see it was an awesome idea.
Yeah.
And then is Carolyn in charge of the book sale?
Is she one, I'm sorry.
Is Carolyn in charge of the books?
Pretty much, yeah.
I'd like to say goodbyes to Carolyn because we made a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yes, it was awesome.
And it was really well done. My sister-in-law came for the first time, I got two bags of books. Yeah. It was very nicely organized.
Good job, you're taking the book. Yeah, besides that, the weather kind of pushed everybody indoors.
Thank you for the rain.
We always thank them for the rain. Yes, so. We'll move on to the director's report.
Um, again, since we're in the middle of summer reading and I had already lined up um, the next few months of Humanities Montana, I don't have anything, does anybody have any questions? Um, if they would like answering today. How are your numbers for summer reading? How about? Pretty good, they're pretty stable. Yeah, my food's been a nice, it's been a good group, a good fun, interactive. We have kind of changed, it's been so hot the last couple of times. We're utilizing more the inside than outside because it's just been, it's brutal.
And so.
Yeah.
Janet had some comments about the Humanities Montana thing.
Well, it's just somebody that. Well, it's just somebody that called, that was all.
Is it anything we need to know?
No. They wouldn't give their names, so, fine.
Thank you.
It was well attended, we had twenty-two people for Ambern. And I looked online this week, sometime there's been over thirty views. So it's on there. Yeah. If anybody has any questions or concerns about it, they should definitely get onto watch it, then they can see.
Exactly. So I couldn't get on for it, but I did get it the next, I did go on the next day.
I tried to watch because I get a, I get an email notification that people are waiting and I ended up not getting any of theirs, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I couldn't get on, so I did, it went on YouTube the next day, so I watched it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And then there, so after the monthly reports page, there's the branch complete totals and the circulation statistics. Does anybody have any questions about those?
When does that close?
When does what?
Oh, those, the.
Is it for the month or is it for the?
Yeah, it's for the calendar month.
Okay.
Yeah. So the first to the last day.
And I see your other announcement, it is for library day.
Yep, so I put that on there because we did travel schedules and things, we're not going to have that August meeting. We, Janet and Kim and I talked about it, so we can talk about that more at the end. But that's why I put that on there at the end. Yeah, so, but we are finishing, Fort Ben finishes summer reading next week. For the big kids, it's Wednesday, for the little kids, it's Thursday, and the adults close on Friday. I believe that's the same for Big Sandy and then Sammy Jo is going a week longer. Like she started a week later and is going a week longer. So that's pretty much where we are because the sports start and the fair is happening and all those things. So we don't have, I mean, we have, I've got my two book clubs in Fort Ben that still go on, but we don't have any planned programming, extra programming in September. We started then, but, so. So everybody looked at the animal policy. I think it looks fine. I just wondered if we should add under other animals, I looked at other policies around the state and they also refer to the Montana annotated code for that description, just to have that legally in there. Like section forty-nine point four point two two one. And I can give that to you if you want. So under which? Oh, under other animals. Yeah.
The definition of animals.
Yeah, and then it just, it actually, on other policies around the state, I just looked just to have the reference. They referred you to the Montana annotated, code annotated, excuse me, to have that in there. So I think, I think what we've done, so this is just first reading anyway, so. I'm just asking. No, and that's fine, so I think we won't, we won't read it all out, it'll be referred to. Yeah. That's what, yeah. I got it. Refer to Montana, code annotated. Do you want me to give you that number? Uh, sure. Oh, forty-nine point four point two two one. Four point two two one. Thank you. And then it also in others, and we don't have to use this, it's just a suggestion, to actually give a more descriptive of the miniature horse. I don't know, I look at miniature horses, I think, how big is that going to be? Yeah, the description is twenty-four inches by thirty-four inches.
Oh, okay.
From shoulder. Between the head and shoulder, yeah. And then the weight is seventy to one ten. Yeah, one hundred and ten pounds. And just to have that description, because I looked at miniature horse.
Yeah, so did I.
How can we have that?
And then all I did was.
So you're saying defined as twenty-seven to thirty-four inches?
Yeah. Yeah. Miniature horse is defined as twenty-four inches to thirty-four. Did you get it, Emily? Well, I can follow it up. And then from the head to the shoulder. Yeah. And then between seventy to one hundred and ten pounds. So I will add those to the next, to it, because this is the first reading. Yeah. So again, we are starting reading. Yeah. Okay. Just to be more descriptive.
Well, it's something I think I should let you know. I actually just moved it up there after this. So we'll, we'll go on to the second reading, one of those are.
It does say miniature horse though, right?
You got a shepherd pony. That is individually trained to work or perform tasks for the benefit of a qualified individual with the disability. And it must be harness, lead, otherwise under control at all times. It must also be housebroken and must not frighten any of the students within the library. Everybody's made a look at our volunteer policies. Is there any suggestions or changes? The policy.
Yeah. It is a, it was already, it was one of the ones that was already a policy on the books that we, the policy committee looked at and, and just made a couple wording changes. But overall, it's this, I think it was written in the late nineties or.
Did they have all their recruitment thing on it? Because that's a long description.
Yeah, no, it was all like this. Yep.
It looks like the one we reviewed.
Well, yeah, you guess, no, I meant was it.
Oh, yeah, no, that policy. All, it was all on.
Yep. And you've always kept records of the volunteers?
Uh, not necessarily, that's part of it. So policy is different than practice, so.
But something to start.
So I also looked through policies on just around the state again. And there's several that include background checks. And I don't know if that's something we want to implement just for safety of children, since they are, I mean, we're recruiting from a large source. So just to have that safety for children if they're going to be interacting with children. So part of that from other, because this was one of the sessions we went to, that I went to at Bute, was talking about different volunteer policies and what it comes to. Most places is the cost because it's not free. So that it would have to take the part of like budget, during budget. Okay, talks like to find out how much each background check would cost. It's like that.
So it could maybe. If it's small enough, we could probably do it in-house.
Yeah, I mean, because we don't have, we don't have random people that show up that we've never met. Or usually they come, they're recommended, or like a referral. Right. And so, yeah. Yeah.
Do you know, working in schools about how much a background check costs?
It's all, yeah.
I know, we have to do background checks in our church.
Do you know how much they cost? Is it like a hundred dollars?
We just do it in-house.
How do you mean you do it in-house?
I mean, vacation.
You do your own fingerprinting?
No, no. Mainly this is a call references, exactly.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not the fingerprinting.
Just, are you thinking of like informal like that or more of the, like the schools?
Either, I just was looking at the policies and they, they recommended, or not didn't recommend, they just.
Lost them.
And some do, and some don't. Okay. I was just.
Something.
Yeah, something to think of. And if it is something we can budget in, that's great. And if not.
Well, I could set. Formal, we can.
Yeah.
If we have a committee, then.
Yeah.
Should you have them provide references when they apply?
Then we can work, we have a meeting, I think, at FAWR.
Policy committee meeting.
So we can look at it again and make an addition.
Okay. Okay. And then I also had a question, just from my knowledge, what would be equipment? Are you, what would be equipment that the volunteers might utilize? Is there, I mean. Well, I want to share, right? It's on page, well, I printed it. Equipment that the volunteer will furnish to perform the activity, if any, because that, so Janelle comes to do whatever, so she brings mixers and bowls and flour. So she provides that. So if a volunteer comes in and says, hey, I think it would be really fun to teach people how to use a loom. And we would be like, great, but you have to bring a loom and all the materials, so that. Yeah.
She also, I mean, she does a pie making class, she does a, so I'm checking out your pressure cookers before you start camping. Yeah. And that. And so, that, so.
About how many new volunteers do you have through your, do you have ballpark that you have in your head? Like you have, like, in general? Now, like for Fort Ben, do you have like five people through a year?
Yeah, I mean, it's, no, it's, it's all, it's less. But the biggest turnover would be during summer reading. And then, so like when kids finish sixth grade or middle school or if the teens are looking for community projects to do, I think that's more. I was at, they're only here for a few years. Um, when people retire and they're looking for, they're like, hi, I'm freshly retired. Um, yeah, or if people moved it down, but it's really not. Or you have, I don't know. We have three or four pretty regular. Okay. Throughout the year.
How reading to children?
Uh, no, we do, so that organizing the books and now that we have our friends too, that kind of ships it. So before we had more individual volunteers and now it's Carolyn will send an email out to the friends and so that. Um, so it's volunteering in a different, I mean, it is still volunteering, they're doing it for free.
Is there an age for, you said, young kids, is there an age?
Like an age line?
Yes. Do they have to be a certain?
Oh, so for summer reading helpers, usually when they finish the sixth grade, because like they can only come K through six. So then if we have kids that just finished sixth grade, they like to come still be part of it. Um, and then they get to be, but then there's always adults too. Like I do the reading. Leanne often does the activity outside and then Esme, I have been helping with like the craft. So there's an adult at each station and then.
To kick.
Then helpers, yeah. So it's kind of like being aligned here, those middle level kids get to be aligned later to the next. So it gives them a little bit of. And a little bit more, but it's still under. Okay.
Because I know with Big Sandy, they had a volunteer that actually was through DECA or one of those clubs through the school. And I think the rich requirement, and she had to be sixteen.
Um, it's sixteen to sub to be paid by the county.
And then that was only high school kids.
Yeah.
That came to the.
Yeah, because it was through a.
Co-op.
Yeah, the co-op, yeah, yeah, it's different.
My data was a DECA.
Right, well, there's work study, but it's a career study also.
But this policy would be separate from work study.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll go for a second, back to committee. So we will hear the public comments, not on the agenda. Your comments are only to be in accordance with the library wishes only. Otherwise, you will not be entitled to be recognized on the floor. And that's from Robert Rule, chapter five. The library is a forum for open discussion, respectful dialogue. Personalized acts are unacceptable and will result in the removal of the student. You have a limit of three minutes.
Emily, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, on your, the question about your policies for background check, because you're a county entity and a county employee, wouldn't that fall under county's policies and responsibilities that you could defer to?
In the, in the county handbook itself?
Yeah, or something like that, someone from the county, because that's deferred to. My second question is just for a refresher, can, will the board members please explain your roles and responsibilities? Thank you.
You need to identify yourself.
Oh, Sissy Felton. Sorry about that.
And actually, her questions are to be to the chairman, not to anybody on the floor or any other person, according to, according to Robert's rules.
I apologize, Janet, I'll do that next time.
Actually. You certainly will come up on there. She must have followed.
Yes, well, and then Janet clarified that it has to be forged. Like if, if someone asks you something, you can't ask of the entire board. It's from the board chair.
She answered that today? I don't think I did ask, I don't think I need to answer today.
But I will figure your pass on. Sissy, is that for, you want the roles to find a chair and vice chair?
All of it, a vice.
I think those are the only two.
All of it, in just what the role responsibility of the board.
Oh, of the board, okay.
Yes.
Oh, that's a lot of job of the board.
And then if possible, the roles of each one, thank you.
So I actually had looked up something on page sixteen and seventeen on the trustee manual. It reads, it is the trustee's job to ensure the goals or objectives are carried out. The board is the one who prepares the library's strategic plan and sets the goals. And it is important that the board implements the plan and includes periodic progress reports with the director. So when we start looking at our goals and our objectives, it will be through the trustees themselves, okay? And then, well, I think, I did look at earlier that. Sure, you want that now, Sissy?
If you have time, yes, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
The board does not manage the day-to-day operation of the library, but rather is responsible for seeing the library as well-maintained with the law and board-established policies. To meet this responsibility, the board has six major tasks. Understanding laws, hire and evaluate the library director. And with the director's input, the board hires and prescribes the duties of the library staff. Set and monitor the library's budget, set all policies, plan for the future of the library, and advocate for the library and the community and, and for the community as board members. There is nothing that says, so the board, chairing the board, it says that the board needs to rotate their leadership position, okay? The trustee serve in the board, chairperson, facilitates the board meetings. And before a scheduled meeting, the chairperson, the director will prepare the agenda. And then it goes on, started a roll call and review the agenda and all the things that we actually do here, okay? So, and there is not anything for the vice chair.
But I think that our bylaws, it simply states, will like take over the duties of the chair in their absence.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I think that's in our bylaws, but, okay.
We want action. Are we done? I think we're done, that's probably close enough, we don't.
The bylaws are actually on. The bylaws are on. Why? Yeah. So.
There's one more thing that I need unanimous consent to change our meeting on September twenty fifth.
Was there any more public comment?
Well, I didn't hear anymore. Would anybody have any more public talk? So we are going to change our meeting date to September due to the absence of two members of the August meeting. Um, you do have a forum because there's three members. So I guess it's not necessary to vote unless there's object and you're skipping the August meeting. That's in Robert's rules, page four forty-three.
Um, and Janet brought up at our policy meeting that um per state standard, um. We tend, the board has to meet a minimum of six times, so we already.
Have to vote that?
Yeah, we have. And since our new budget, the budget won't be approved by the county until after the August meeting anyway. Um, there's not a whole, necessarily a whole lot to.
I think it's good to do because some of us are.
Yeah.
So that's all it says, it's not necessary to vote unless there is an objective. So our next meeting will be at twelve o'clock on Wednesday, September twenty fifth. And the meeting will adjourn at twelve fifty-five. Oh, Misty was on German, yeah. I'm sure. I'm sure I'll be.
We should see. I'm gonna meet you while we're waiting for, like when we're getting switched for the foundation, but I mean, we'll just leave the recurring going. Um, and then when we unmute, I will make, make sure everybody knows that. So everybody who's online, we will go into foundation in probably just a few minutes, but.
Okay, then let's call a meeting to order. Uh, the first thing on our agenda is additions or changes to the agenda. I have one thing I'd like to add from agenda, and that is just a review of the check signing policy or situation.
Under new business. Well, we can buy them or unfinished, so it's, uh, okay.
Anybody else have anything we want to add to the agenda or change that's on the agenda?
Are we still doing the budget?
So she, she planning on coming, but then she did have some long meetings today, so she just texted me a few minutes ago, she will be unable to come over, but. So I'll tell everyone first. What question, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't speak any public, although there might be public on Zoom. Uh, so if there are any public comments, now's a good. Uh, so if there are any public comments, now's a good time for them. Hearing none, we'll move on then to the uh minutes. Everybody's had a chance to see the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes or is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I am watching to approve the minutes.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Yes. Well, second.
The states have seconded the motion and Kim made the motion, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fall opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. Um. Are we going to have another board member on? I should have.
We need to talk about is one of the things we actually talk about, yeah.
Let's add that to the agenda too. I should have, I should have just noticed that. Uh, looking at the minutes, I see Danielle seconded a motion last time and she's not here, so we'll add that to your unfinished business, new business.
What are we adding?
Uh, board member representation.
So the bylaws for the foundation.
Minimum of two and a maximum of three board members need to be on this.
Yeah.
Trustees need to be on this one. So Kim's one and Danny was the other, but she was, yeah.
Okay.
So we need to talk about that.
Gotcha.
All right. Treasurers report, Tanya's not here, but she did.
And I can best answer questions. I don't have a whole lot to do with the budgeting aside giving to. They'll send.
Is everybody up?
They should. Definitely.
So the CDs, the one that reset most recently, it went from four point three five percent to four point two percent. So still pretty good rate and its next reset date for both CDs is November twenty second.
Can you say that percentage a month on that?
Yeah, the new interest rate is four point two zero percent.
Four point two zero, zero two.
Two zero.
Two zero.
Four point two percent. And the both of them reset on November twenty second.
Are there any comments about the treasurer's report? Any questions, perhaps an only getting to?
Um, as I was looking at them, there is a lot of negative numbers on there, right? Um, but on the overall, obviously there is a lot of money there. Um, so that's part of.
This method of accounting.
This method. Yeah. Maybe without accounting back then. That's why I'm doing it. Right. There's virtue. That's why I.
Supposed to be a treasurer that doesn't account. Excellent. And then the numbers are unnecessary. Sure. I can lots of study of it.
I don't have any questions, but. I won't entertain any.
Is the, um, which, not that I was just curious, is the money on here from the books, Sam?
Um, I did not see that on there, so I'm not sure if that's in that first balance sheet, if it's just not. Um, pulled out, does that make sense? Like, I don't think it's in that line of red money.
Because that would have. Upset that Fort Benton book, wouldn't it? But they had some of that.
So we got the Fort Benton Book Club got a separate grant through Humanities Montana, so that's, it was a five hundred dollar grant, so. Um, that's part of that, but yeah, so that's why it doesn't make much sense to me.
What about the contributions revenue on page two or four? Would that be the? Um, book fair money?
Hundred and eighteen.
So that.
Oh.
I agree. Seven hundred, would that mean? Because what did he name?
A hundred and seventeen, hundred.
But then we matched it.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not from that because we haven't turned it.
Hey, I still need to send the check to them and then they, and actually that eight hundred dollars doesn't even change hands. It's like. They don't give us then, we send the four hundred and then we get the one hundred dollars open books.
Oh, I see. Okay, so that was just so happen to be a similar effort.
Yeah.
Right? That was like that. No, okay.
Is most of what we're seeing here, is it summer reading?
Yeah.
Hours, okay.
So each branch gets a thousand dollars for from town park. So that's for summer reading and then Backpack Buddies is separate. Um, Big Sandy got a thousand dollars, Peps ordered all the food. Um, did Janet talk about it? No, whoever.
Yeah, thank you.
So then they submitted their invoice and I turned that into Tanya and then Tanya sends the check back to Peps. And then Nancy takes care of ours, so we don't touch any of that money. And then I think Geraldine, Sammy Joe was working with Nancy. And they did some kind of cost share, like Nancy ordered. More than what she ordered for us, so then Geraldine got a six hundred dollar grant for Backpack Buddies. So then Sammy Joe goes and purchases all of that and as I get her. Um, she goes and pays for it as I get her receipts, I turn that back in and then Tanya reimburses Sammy Joe. Okay, so it's kind of an in and out. Um. Across, so, okay.
So. Like going, so we saw Fort Benton, so we saw Big Sandy at two thousand, you said there's town pump and then we saw Corbin had one thousand and another two hundred. Now plus an additional two hundred dollars.
Which might have been worse because we have our, um. We have like our uh donation big jar that's up there. So like if somebody comes and maybe fifty cents worth of copies, they give me a dollar. And they'll say, we'll keep the change. So then we put that change in that for that donation. Um, and then when we get. A bunch of cash in it, we just pull it out and I take it over and she deposits it.
And that way that could be part of it. And so then Geraldine, it looks like you have the one thousand dollar grant and also six hundred dollars.
So then that six hundred dollars is from, she has, instead of people donating prizes for summer reading, they, right? Like we just, oh, we'll get a check over to deposit today. That was from Joyce's, you know, the one million dollars, so. Um.
Okay. So that looks like the main changes are then just supplies for summer.
Yeah, okay.
Um. You think, uh, um. Tanya will be here in October.
October or in Big Sandy, and so I'm not her, but hopefully she would be in Zoom. We have the Zoom set up, so.
Yeah, right.
It's just hard since she.
Sure.
Has a bank job to get out in the middle of the day.
I understand, I understand, um.
And if you come up with any questions, I know I. Really easy to talk to her. She does the calls, so I can answer any questions. And it's different than. The board of trustees, they have this as a government money, so there it's different, um. Guidelines there.
Yes, or it has to be public.
Right, yeah.
Got you.
Yep.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so are we ready to, uh? Move on to treasurer's report?
Make a motion to accept it.
Motion made to accept the treasurer's report is your second. Seconded, Tamara. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fall opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we move on to an announcement dates to remember. I'm assuming this is U M O.
Yeah, so. Um, we have two more Humanities Montana speakers, Mary Jean Bradbury will be coming September sixteenth. She does. I don't know how to, like a historical reenactment, so the one she's doing here will be Calamity Jane, so she dresses in period clothing. And does a presentation that way. And then Chris Latre, current Montana poet laureate, will be here in October. We're trying to arrange some more, Women's Club wants him to come and, or to do a presentation with them while he's here, so. And that's, all those are free to us, for us.
Is Christopher Tate Latre, is he kind of, is he teaching how to do poetry or is he?
Well, that's, he has different, he has different presentations that he does. So for the library one, I think I selected the one about the history of the little shelf. Trying, he does it about that, but he does do a writing one and that's what Women's Club is interested in because they need their writing contests with the kids. So we're trying to work out like a school women's club.
That's a good idea.
Collaboration as long as he's going to be in town, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Any other questions? Thanks for that question, Kim. So unfinished business, G B L shed.
So it's in, it's set, I think. I just submitted Butch's invoice. Um, and Sammy Joe's received for the boards, so. Um, he went right in and got it all done and lifted everything. That was super fast and then.
Right behind the building.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right behind there. Sammy Joe bought the boards, the pressure treated boards and painted them and she and her partner installed them. Um, and then the shelving came in and she put up that shelving too.
Have you been over to see it?
I have, I did see on Facebook the pictures of it.
I should look for that. Is it under the?
So the Geraldine group is a little different. You have to actually ask to be.
Group.
It's a group, not a pay. And she didn't set that up. That was set up before, but you just put a request in then, yeah, it's not like it's super private or anything, so.
Secret club meeting.
I might be able to, um, yeah, I might be able to like send you.
That's okay, I'll, I'll go there and see.
Yeah.
And I heard on the trustee meeting, she chinned in about closing some holes underneath as per the city council's request. I guess there were some ways that critters could get underneath it.
Under the shed already?
Well, no, it was just because.
Just a little worried about.
Since you set it down on top of there, they were afraid of it, so she, but she has it all. It looks great, okay, so. I mean, nothing is.
City council is just wanting to prevent that occurrence, I guess.
Critters can always dig.
Right.
It doesn't look, I think they're the mention of skunks.
Yeah, yeah.
Skunks are gonna be around here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent. So then moving on to air filters for each branch. Well, before you, you bring that up, this. In the sky here, it's been, you know, pretty hazy, I mean extremely hazy for. Better part of a week now is that smoke from somewhere. Where's Canada again?
But Idaho has a fires in Helena, that big fire.
Or a skulp. There are a bunch of fires, aren't there?
Okay, so that's what this is from. I was going that here be harvest dust, yeah.
Yeah.
Not yet, it's nuts. All righty, thank you, Emma.
Yeah, so I got the square footage, so this is whole building square footage, which. For Big Sandy and Geraldine, I mean, so Fort Benton total is fifteen thousand four hundred forty-two square feet. Um, Big Sandy is approximately thirty-five hundred square feet and Geraldine is just over a thousand.
Okay.
So.
Well, Geraldine, that's gonna be pretty much. That's what it would be even if they separated out different spaces, but I asked Darlene and Big Sandy to give it separated out. Uh, because she hasn't done that. I can go in there and do that too, because it's gonna.
Right, she told, she told me that she wasn't going to do that. She wouldn't be that funny.
All right. It's, okay, um. So do you have a recommendation?
Um, I would think that one should cover Geraldine. And then two for Big Sandy, one that would be in the back and one that would be in the front. And then, but for Fort Benton, we would have to break down that square footage also.
How does maintenance work on these? Like, is there, is staff gonna have to wash filters?
I don't, I don't, probably.
But I think it's a full customer, certainly on an annual basis, so I have to budget for that.
Okay, and that might be something we can have Kirby do to make sure it's, it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I would think for Fort Benton. Um, that it would be more important to do the two sides of the upstairs because we don't have as much, I mean, we have like meeting, but not as many things.
Basically upstairs and, yeah, and there are different sizes of air, air filter units, so you know. The big room up here is gonna take a pretty sizable one to start with, but they're portable. I mean, they're on wheels, you can move them around.
Yeah, sure.
They're very quiet, at least the ones in the Big Sandy schools were.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, I was curious about the, how loud they were, but they're.
Yeah, no, they're not bad at all, um. So this was, to me, this would fall under. Um, we need to do the capital improvement plan. Um, especially for the Fort Ben building because like Geraldine just got remodeled and Big Sandy's still fairly new, so that, I mean, that would be for there. But under the capital improvement plan for then sort of work with the trustees. Um. I don't, I don't know what that looks like right now, but, um. So it would also actually, sorry, just I thought of it, this would be something maybe we could take to Lippard Play Witter. So that would actually be, that's a great idea for this year because we don't have our. We list, so that would be.
Totally, except, yeah, and they need real specific.
Yeah, so those are usually due at the very end of September. They show up at time, um. To. To do that.
Let me ask, would you be more comfortable waiting until the capital improvement plan is completed?
I am afraid if we wait for that, it will never happen.
Okay.
Because it's been almost three years that I've been asking for that and we haven't even started, so.
Right, so. In, I'm gonna infer from that that you'd like to move ahead with the Fort Benton one as well here. So we have a recommendation of, was it two or three units in, in, in Florida?
Uh.
Two of Sandy, one in Geraldine.
Yeah.
You didn't say how much they are each, did you?
No, so that would just be some, uh, that would be research to.
Gotcha.
To figure out and there, because there's gonna be different levels and there's gonna be different costs per how big the unit is, so.
Right, but if I remember right, the, the ones that we were looking at initially, which. You know, covered. It's about five hundred dollars a piece, or the medium sized ones that went work in, in Geraldine and Big Sandy.
Okay.
So that's about fifteen hundred dollars there, five hundred a piece.
Oh, that, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, and it's the same, I can't even remember the name of the company now, but it's the company that the schools have been getting them from.
And we don't need board approval, the board trustee's approval to do the Clay Witter, right, what do you say?
Clay Witter.
Clay Witter, could you do that grant do we, because that would.
Right. Do you have a copy, do you have a copy of what they ask for when you submit something?
For Lippard? Um, it's pretty basic. I think, I mean, we have it somewhere, but it's pretty much like. What do you want to do?
It's almost like.
It's over a certain amount you have to have. Um. Like your budget, like you have to have.
Yes. But on that, it's almost five thousand. Information for Ben, like it's very minimal. Here's your organization, here's contact, here's your E I N.
Because you filled it out last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it's what do you do with last year's money? What do you want? Like a line item breakdown of what you want this year?
Yeah, okay. And then, but yeah, the follow up, you're supposed to make a report at the end, um. So not an air filter, but a Lippard Play Witter, uh, Marin has found a book finding repair machine. Um, that would be very helpful for the whole system because we can do. So it's kind of costly upfront, I want to say fourteen hundred, maybe or fifteen hundred, um, but. So it's kind of costly upfront, I wanna say fourteen hundred, maybe or fifteen hundred, um but definitely would be used for book repair, so then, then keep your books in circulation for longer.
So you did want that for the playwitters, that?
Yeah, and I haven't gotten any requests. San Joe's list, we've been kind of chipping away at her list, and then we were able to meet some of the Big Sandy things with our operating budget, so, um but we've been staying pretty on top of that. Also, just reminder that uh Big Sandy did get that Mahoon money, so there's quite a bit left in that, and then they get more strand, not strand, strand is for um Geraldine, uh Tordick money. Could usually get a fairly sizable Tordick check, Big Sandy does every year, so there are different, I guess there are, I mean there are different income streams besides Lippard playwitters, so air purifiers and book bindings would be for all the branches, that wouldn't be a branch specific, that would be a system wide, which I think Lippard playwitter probably you know, they prefer it, but I'm sure would make for a good clean application.
They would prefer what?
Well, I know what they would prefer, it'll be for the whole system, but just it would be a lot cleaner and Yeah, it's, yeah, so
Then you just, are you gonna do that one again, or?
I can, yeah, I don't mind doing it. Okay, that's a grand experience, but I did one year and it went through, but it's it's basic and they're pretty nice about it.
Emily, do you remember the company you were looking at?
It was one of my seventy-two open town. The library one, on their thing. And so I was like, I don't know, if you did something, please look.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, last year, we had bought the shed with like twenty twenty, twenty-two application money. And so I remember I wrote, I was like, I don't know if they even care if I wrote this whole, like, we're behind the ball, we have your money, we absolutely gonna buy the shed, we're very sorry. Like, how do you know, right? I don't know if you're mad at us, right, we understand if you are, we're mad at us too. So with the air filters, is there, if we're gonna do it for the whole system, is there a portable one that we would want to? Cause we talked about like two upstairs, is there like an all portable one for down here that we could then ship for events, which Not an issue? To have it on portable, okay.
Well, I mean, or even if it's just kind of big. If they're on, and we have our dolling and stuff, so.
So you can come up with basically a list model, but like the information you're power, here's what we're looking, we have five of these models, okay? And then the bank press, okay.
Rich, if you would work with me on that.
I'm looking at one, for example, this is kind of a one of their larger ones, we're twenty-two, twenty-eight square feet. And it's five hundred ninety-four. Um there's one of two two thousands of feet, it's four hundred dollars.
Cause I would think, is if like that size in particular, would be one in the front of Big Sandy, one in the back.
I think less than a thousand at Big Sandy, then it'll come in at, you know, probably a thousand or less. In Big Sandy and five hundred or so in Geraldine, and then we'll figure out what we need here.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Yeah, if you give me a time to come down here.
Okay, let's talk after.
Yeah, with Sammy Joe, was she looking for any additional equipment for for our whole history project?
Um I think we got everything, cause we got the recorder, we got like extra SD cards, we've already been able to get all of that ordered, I can ask her though.
Yeah, I mean, so, cause she, did she just put them on or in the window to?
Yeah, she already had that too, well, she has on the TV. She got for, yeah, so we're pretty, she's pretty good at sanding, talking about those kinds of things and communicating with me, so. But we, she and I can talk about that.
Okay. So we've got a basic list for a claw witter, realistically, we have thirty days, I mean, we have about a month.
Well, too, cause usually we do it at the end of August, as long as we've sat down and done it, which gives us only one month, so we have like all of August, and it's usually due September thirtieth, I wanna say. Three might get done in a month.
We'll get it done in a little, two, three weeks, then you'll have everything you need.
Okay, and doing it this way, I think it'll be more straightforward, it's several lists of like eighteen different things that we want, it won't be, hopefully, like this. And this.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, so everybody okay with the planning forward? Um but I don't know if we need to have an approval of money at this point, because we're gonna put in So maybe we wanna wait till our October meeting, and then we'll know by then?
Yeah.
Is that something, Kate, everybody, we'll wait till
When's the October meeting?
I was trying to think if we would actually have the
Yeah, and I, we can send it all out, and again, that's where foundation is different than, um
I feel like it's like, I don't know, November. That they actually
They announce, then we don't get money until like January, February.
But I don't.
Christmas announcement.
They won't have a announcement by our October meeting.
Um but then a difference from foundation to trustees is this is something like, we can put the numbers together and I can just send it all out to you, and you can say yes.
Yeah, we can sign via internet to kind of call an online meeting if we need to. So thanks for doing that, Kim.
You're welcome. So it should be under three thousand total for the right, so all of Big Sandy, five hundred for Geraldine, so that's fifteen hundred, and we would think around fifteen. Yeah, because we also wanna put that filter cap, maybe if we can get, if we're getting a grant, we could order extra filters while we're doing it.
Yeah, that would be nice too.
And I will get that amount for the book binding machine, I think Marin has a, anyway, but I wanna say it was like a fifteen hundred, so, and we've gotten in the past. I mean, the year we got for the shed, we got for ten thousand just for Geraldine, so I don't think we're any more close to it.
And there's not currently a book binding machine?
No.
Is, is there any equipment required to go with the machine?
I'm not sure.
You're talking about the book binding machine, okay, I don't know about that.
To keep it going and have what she needs. I I mean, just if if you're doing extra filters for the air purifiers, if there's extra.
If there's only one, then that would be like the other branches, like, need to bring their books here.
So I go, yeah, so I go to each branch um every, twice a month. And so we've got it pretty good, and Sammy Joe actually even comes usually on the Oakley's when I don't go, so. Yeah, it's a pretty cool turnaround.
For the check signing policy, would you want to do that?
Yes, let's move on to that then, um this is just a review, but Tamara and I were following a little bit, may maybe you can share.
Need to sign a bunch of checks when we have the when we have the process of two people on as signers, and then Tony writes all the checks, I just, it kind of negates the reason for having two signers that aren't Tony, if we don't
Signing blank checks like ten times, and I'm not comfortable with that either, and that's not to impugn anybody's honesty, it's just you know, not to me a very good process, so I that, I wanna throw that out there for discussion at this point.
We can maybe schedule once a week, visit the sign.
To me.
What we'd have to commit to.
We don't have a very necessarily regular, like, for the county money, like, we get the power bill every month, we get the water bill every month versus things through the foundation are like, beginning of summer, there's a lot of bills that go through, because there's summer reading, we're making orders for summer reading, um or like when we got the five thousand dollar book grant, we are limited by most of the book companies, well, at all the places where we order book from, books from, including Amazon um send invoices when they're delivered or whatever, so if Marin puts in an order again, Amazon or Baker and Taylor puts in an order for a hundred books, but only fifty of them can be shipped, so then we get an invoice for those fifty, and then maybe we'll, they'll ship eight more now and three more later, and so a lot of it, it just depends on when they come through, it's not a real set thing, so for ease of, it would either have to be like I'm gonna go to the bank every Wednesday at whatever time and sign, need a check for and then it would have, just have to happen that way, so that she for sure can
Is Tonya on the board? She's not on it now, okay, so does she have any like ability to, like, could we have her be a signer?
She hasn't stated she does not want to go signer. Cause I That's like the checks and balances, right, so like she's writing the checks, but she can't
That's a good point.
Deposit any, so then if you sign, I I get what you're saying, and like you're signing blank checks, you don't know where they're going, but then if Kim you know, then if Tony calling says, I have eight bills I need to send out, then Kim sees where those are going. I guess it could be if you're the second signer, you say, I went and signed ten checks, so they were for Baker and Taylor.
And we only have one signature on a blank check, we never have two signed, two signatures on a blank check, is that, would that be? Cause the check is, but that way, if you're out of town.
Yeah, I I guess.
You're still feeling like you signed something, like
Well, I have, I have no idea what I've signed. And I, I think that's the piece where I'm, there's, there's
Can Emily, can you be a signer?
I don't wanna be a signer either.
So either there's me to this or there isn't. Either I'm signing something I know, or why are you doing this at all?
Yeah, yeah, I I just would like to, and I mean, if if it's, we have, we know we're gonna be billed for Amazon for something, I mean, even if we had a pay to and I knew where it was going, that would be helpful, like if we have these, like, we're gonna be ordering from Baker and Taylor, Amazon, like, these things are upcoming. And that's on a pay to, I would be okay with knowing that that's where
Yeah, and like I said, it's just so
Could she and I have, someone has login ability to follow up and see like, here's the check I find, here's a copy of it? If there's, I mean, like
I think we have the, um don't, don't we have the, no, the the paper under
Cause I don't wanna add a ton of work to Tonya. Like, I think asking her for a photograph of the chair, before it goes out, would be like, no.
Well, I don't know, I can check, we can ask, like, when I get my bank statements every month, it has the pages with the
Yes, those are big photographs.
Those, I just, so
Cause then we would know, we'd have verification where the checks went.
Yeah, I mean, I do understand.
And I do, I come in weekly, I think summertime is the only time when I don't.
Might be a time period.
And but otherwise, I am here every Wednesday and could, you know, it's it would be
Or just to check in, like when you're in town, we can stop by the bank and see if there's
Checks that need signed.
And I can talk to her too about that, I mean, it's like when I take claims to the courthouse Cheryl prepares them, but she, the only time the commissioners can sign off on them are Mondays and every other Tuesday. So like, we have to, you know what I mean?
Cause I know when I went in yesterday, I can put her on the spot, and I'm like, and here, do you have any checks, and she said, the checkbook's not even here at the house. I didn't wanna put her on the spot, but at the same time, I was like, if we know that there are checks that might be written for that week, and if I'm coming every week things could still be on time, they'll pay, but, or for paying those invoices, but we would have some more checks.
And that makes sense, because policies are, you know, independent of personnel, so at some point, we'll have someone who's not Tonya. So we can't have, you know, a policy that depends on knowing the
So maybe, I guess, are the three of you on there? So my, this would just be my suggestion, would be to try it all, where you go together and just have a chat with her about it. And how, like, and I get what you're saying too, um but at least have something written down that says, you know, the treasurer will have the checks or the bills ready on this day, or you know, I can just, and figure out what
And maybe we can give her, cause who's got, like, I work in Fort Benton, so my schedule's wide open. Like, who, do you guys have, either have a very tight schedule, cause maybe one of us could say, like, I'm in town this day, just have a group text. Like, I'm in town Tuesday noon, can we all?
Like if you're coming for a assembly.
I think that it will, versus like, unless I change my mind, Ali, or Nora will be doing pre-k, so I'll be coming to town three days a week. But I don't know what days pre-k you do.
Right, so yeah, so but then that, I mean, that, and that's the kind of thing that we'll be independent of, regardless of, you know, I mean, it's just the way different schedules work. So maybe we just set up for the next year, for the term.
And maybe yes, Tonya says she's trying to balance it with work, which I think always pretty nice, but still, cause you're like, Tonya, what would it look for you?
So at this point, it sounds like there's a plan for either all three of you or two of the three to get to get to Tonya and and just try to figure out when work, can you report that uh at our October meeting? Okay, thank you, we'll just leave that go for now, that's, you don't need a decision on that, you guys bring uh a plan to our October meeting, that'd be good. Thank you. Director report.
So Janet already used her two terms.
Yep, Janet is off the foundation.
And no, there's a new chair, which she's gonna have her hands full, I mean, I I can hear her in the back of my mind already going So I suppose.
Yeah, cause Nancy's still having um other commitments.
Well, and that's, I don't know if it was meant to, I, no, I, but that's, so standing was the one that went off, and was she was the Geraldine representation, then like, that was Justin was, yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
But there's no guidelines, as far as I know, from
Somebody else from Geraldine there, but
So, how many trustees do we need?
So there has, the way that the
Two, maximum of three.
Minimum of two, maximum of three.
And how many board members are we supposed to have, six?
On the foundation?
Yeah. So we just have one replaced, okay. So we have to hope she says yes? Or change the laws, the bylaws.
Call her.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'll do that, um I just need her phone number, would you send out a new sheet?
Yes, I think I did.
Okay, I Send it to me, just special. Just give me her uh number, name, last name too. What is last name?
Rittland.
Rittland.
Okay.
Send it to your phone.
Okay.
For contact information is on your phone right now.
Awesome, thank you.
How do you guys say your name? Do you say Jessa Lynn, or is it just Jessa Lynn?
That's it.
Wait, you're right. Jessa Lynn, okay.
Right here, obviously, thanks. Her mom may say differently, but
There's a girl on my bus, and she was Megan, she was not Megan.
That's so hard, what is your parents telling you, this is what you need to become.
Well, you just say, hey, Megan, it's not Megan.
I have, I first started teaching at Eleora, was Eleora, it took me a long time. And then I, it's really hard for me to call anybody Laura again after that.
When I, I first got to Big Sandy, through church, and I had a committee meeting one day, and I was brand new. And this is myself and four women, a Carla, a Charlotte, a Marla, and a Marla. And I was so confused. Never got it straight, I mean, it took me a year, mainly.
I know, I've got a passion, be like Ms. Rittland, Mrs. Ritt.
Yes.
Sorry, Emily, you were about to say something.
Um, yes, actually, then I was looking at that, so mostly I wanted to talk about the capital improvement plan, which I put under new business, so that would be Mostly I wanted to talk about the capital improvement plan, which I put under new business, so that would be. Yeah, if that's okay, um. Like I said earlier today, um, so Geraldine's freshly remodeled. Big Sandy has had a lot of work done, I mean, it was a brand new building and then there's been more work done, so they're, they're both pretty set, but. This building has not been looked at enough, it needs, I personally am not.
You need the board to do it.
Well, I think we need to talk about like, like, I can't climb up and look at the roof, I don't know what the roof is supposed to look like, um. But we do, I mean, we have our wish list, but it's something. That we will need to do, but it will need to be the foundation and the trustees kind of working together, but then it gets harder because of. Quorum and public noticing and things like that, and so. Um, I, what I would like to see as director is the foundation. Collect the data. So then it can be presented.
Actually, I like that too, if, if the foundation takes the lead. And then presents to the board, then we can kind of get some things done before we have the public.
Right. Cause I think that was part of Janet's concern last month, was that it would all need to be done. And I understand her other point was like what the trustees want may be different than what the foundation wants, but you, we have to start somewhere, because if we don't start, there will be nothing.
Would possibly a very good real estate, uh, what is it, when you buy a house, you get an inspection, right? No appraisal or. But yes.
Inspection, yeah.
Yeah.
How about when I come down to. Work on the air filter thing that you and I do a walkthrough and.
That would be great.
I can make a list of what things we need.
Yeah.
To get data on.
Right, okay, and so, and that's my fear is, there's been. Miscommunication happening between myself and the trustees. That, like. I think it's the, the impression there, some trustees are getting that, like when I present a, uh. An idea that that means I wanna one hundred percent move forward and I'm making that choice, and that's not. I, I wanna be, and that's the thing, like, that's not being a signer on the checks, like. I want to plan these things and I would like to move forward on these things, but I. One hundred percent know that it's not my standalone decision to do these things, but. It is capital improvement is something I've been asking to do since September of twenty twenty one.
So, so I think there's either you have one group or organization. Person that can do an entire inspection, or we start chapping around for like key air conditioning installers that will donate a thorough inspection. We like to look at individual systems and look at who installs themselves, like a refer will go up and.
We have.
Or we pay for like we need.
Yeah, cause we have boiler problems this winter, which. Isn't a big deal, except when it's forty below for.
Right.
X amount of days, and I have had a community member actually came and asked about the kitchen area that's been out of commission since before COVID. Because Women's Club uses the. Uses it, and so she said that Women's Club would probably be willing to be a partner. To get that fixed, but what does that look like? We need new flooring over there and, um. The roofing, and then the lights, the lights need to be looked at, that was brought up during the trustee meeting today. That will range, and it's because boughs are going out and there's so many different bulbs and just. And when you put everything in at the same time, it tends to all go out at the same time, and so that's another project. Um, that we would need to, I mean, it is a county building, but.
If we could. Like, I don't know, at the state level, they have anybody who looks at libraries and looks at all those different pieces.
Tour buildings.
Yeah, and if they made recommendations on this is what we see needs to be taken care of. And then if we made a list of those things and even opened it up to the community and said. Here's what we have that needs to be sorted out, would you like to partner with us?
Yeah.
And we could almost make it a, this is a big deal. You could put your name on it. Like, and I don't know, we could, we could be creative with how we present it, but then. All of the financial burden wouldn't fall on one thing, and. The experts hopefully could say, I'll help you fix it, yeah.
And that's my thing is simply that, like, we have, there has to be an initial list, right, like, we have.
Are you thinking for the install or for the evaluation?
Well, I just think for the evaluation initially.
Yeah.
And just have somebody, if, if there would be somebody who could, um.
Make their time to come and be like.
Cause there are people to do that, I mean, I had, we had an energy audit, then I think we, every ten years. Northwestern Energy does an energy audit, and it's free, and there was a guy who came and. Did this like lower test to see how sounder, um, how. How closed up the building was, and our house miraculously passed. But he said some building, you know, some newer buildings are too tight, so they don't have the airflow they need, and, but he also, you know, looked at. The lights and things, and I don't know, he was able to make a lot of recommendations on things that I wouldn't have thought about.
Right, so should maybe start with utilities, like start with Northwestern Energy. Um. Who else does that utilities and see if they offer? I mean, maybe, cause it's a historical building, it's different, but could you have like, is it different?
It, so, cause we're in the historical district.
I don't know if you could just have like.
Who checks?
Like. Then, you know, come out and. You know, check the roof, yeah, like, I don't know, like, and give you a quote, like, is our roof good, like, cause I feel like they would know. Yeah, so do you think the historic thing, like, should we, cause who's our new thing, Cory Sloan, should we ask her if she's aware of some state level person that evaluates historic buildings?
That might be.
Of course, I'm from that.
Consultant.
That would be helpful, because then we'd have a jumping off point and it wouldn't.
Right.
Be so, cause I think if we just tried to piece it all together, we probably missed something.
Right, you might as well get people and know what they did.
Yeah, yeah, I think about how things are done on farms and then like, oh, we try our best, but.
So I don't think, only two words, action. Action steps from right now is Rich and I will do a walkthrough. And try to create our list, I will talk to Cory about that, but I think if we start there, that, I would love that, that would be.
Good.
A perfect. And then we can even just bring it to the October meeting and say, here's our initial list, does anybody. See something that's missing, like blaring, right, like you read something a hundred times and miss the spelling, but.
Thinking I'll also call Robin Scrubin, she's on the state library board. And see if there's any resources that she could move to us two on the state level. Before even I meet.
Okay.
Okay.
And I know some people at Northwest Energy, so I can contact them.
Yeah, they offer.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Kim, fucking that.
Now I have to like write on my.
I can look up that guy, he came to our house in April, he was very good.
Nice.
I can look him up, he came from home, I think.
Laura, I think. Uh, probably Charlie. Cause they do a lot to me.
Mike M. H is the guy I had, do you wanna write his name down, M. A.?
M. A. or M. Y.?
Sorry, M. I. C. A. C. A. H.
Okay.
M. E. H. U. S. And he's, he was the energy specialist, his number is four oh six. Four, three, one. Three, seven, six, seven.
Energy specialist with who?
Um. He has a, and Shelby contacted, hold on just a minute, cause they give you a full report then that they email you. Um.
Like, is he an independent contractor?
Okay, he was contracted by Northwestern Energy, Shelby.
Nice.
Was with the. Northwestern Energy, it's the home energy check, so it, it might be different for the library, but. Um.
Okay, thank you.
But that was how I went through Northwestern Energy, so that it was free.
Okay, nice.
That was the key there, so.
And what, what did they call what he did, uh? Energy audit?
Uh. Energy check?
Okay.
Home energy check is what.
Well, I know that for home energy checks, they tend to seal the house up and then blow air into it and do some measuring, pretty hard to do that in a building like this.
Well, they do it based on the square footage and. There's a calculation that they have to do, if you get a new person, he said they don't always know how to do it, but. Okay, so.
Sounds good.
We got a plan, folks, that's, I'm feeling good about that. We got ourselves a plan. Uh. Yeah, and you don't have to wait another four years, or three years to get something, we'll get something started this fall. That we can move forward with.
Okay.
So in a year, we'll have.
Yeah.
A capital improvement.
So like not putting out fires.
Right.
Like flooding basements.
Cause that's happened and.
And then it will, I feel awesome. This is all we do now.
Let's ask for this next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we can do it.
And those air filtrations are not affected in terms of. What capital improvements we would do, it's something that wouldn't be affected, so we'd still keep, I'm gonna be able to keep using it.
Now we go to the Pilcrow Foundation Grant.
So that's the one from the. Book sale, so. That was, I mean, I announced the paperwork done, I just need to take it over and get the checks sent. And so, but I think, it would be my understanding, that there would need to be a motion. To write the check to, yeah.
Okay. So.
Send the check.
Um, as indicated, we need a motion to accept this and commit four hundred dollars to. Unlock the eight hundred dollars.
I need a motion.
Uh, Tamara moves and Kim seconds. A motion to just exactly that. To commit four hundred dollars in matching funds to unlock the eight hundred, I like those deals.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Great. And then we come to our next meeting to, you know.
So that will just depend on, I mean, like our last three trustee meetings now have been right at an hour. So if we wanted to do like a one fifteen start, tentatively, is that, I can change that.
It'll be right after the trustee.
The three, yeah, that's, alright, no, no, I think four.